Pastor Jackson is here. Pastor Floris? Okay, we'll have a...
We have Pastor Anthony here from Victory...
Where's Pastor Anthony? Is he here?
Right there.
Pastor Anthony, lead us in an invocation so you could come up. Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you. I'll ask all those that are able to stand to please do so at this time. Thank you.
Every head bowed. Father, in the name of Jesus, this evening, Lord, we come before you, Lord, and we ask you for your wisdom and your guidance. We pray that your Spirit will be with us, Lord, that you will give us wisdom as we continue to... as you continue to govern our city, Lord. We pray, God, that our city and all the plans will be in your hands, Lord God. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen, thank you. This one will face the flag. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every single justice for all. Alrighty, first of all, I want to thank everyone for being here. At this point, I'd like to open up the Baldwin Park Regular Meeting. I will open it up with the Housing and the Finance Authority, including the Municipal Finance Authority. So we're moving all those concurrent. Also, let me just read this one section that we have here before I go through this real quick. All right, this is also announced as required by the government code, Section 5495-2.3. Members of the City Council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the City Council this evening, and each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the Housing Authority meeting, and $50 for attending the Finance Authority meeting. So, at this point, council members wishing...
Can you read that one more time?
Yes.
You read it a little fast. I'm sorry.
Sure, we'll slow down. Absolutely.
Thank you.
You bet, you bet. Okay, under the government code, Section 5495-2.3, "Members of the City Council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the City Council this evening, and each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the Housing Authority, and $50 for attending the Finance Authority meeting." Yes. All right, at this point, council members wishing to share or close? Yes, council member Cruzbaca.
First of all, I would like to... I'm sorry. I would like to close on behalf of Albert Ambreeze Jr., the son of Albert Ambreeze, council member from the city of Irwindale. We send out his condolences... our condolences, I'm sorry, to the family. And also, and we have present Pastor Anthony and his wife Hilda, and some other congregation from their church. Pastor Anthony and his wife lost their son a few days ago.
Oh, wow.
So, I would like to close on Anthony Jr.'s behalf as well.
Pastor, on behalf of the City Baldwin Park, thank you, Councilmember Cruzbaca. Our deepest condolences goes out to you and your family. May he rest in peace. Also, real quick, before we go on, I want to also acknowledge Congresswoman that's here tonight, Congresswoman Grace Napolitano. Thank you for your presence here at the City Council in that perspective. So at this point, I'll move on to the council members wishing to close or say any comments.
Now, if I just may, real quickly, just to the public and our members back at home, we have so many events going on in the next month or two. Just make sure you go to the website. As I look at some of our items, we do have our 62nd Anniversary Parade coming up, and we also have El Dia de los Muertos. The police department is also putting a really nice trick-or-treat day where, you know, they service all the kids of our community. And so, please look in the website. There's so much for families, and a lot of things are free, so please take advantage of them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Also, I want to recognize Cindy Michelle. Thank you for being here, who's running for judge, office number 16. Experience, fairness, and integrity, and thank you for being here tonight as well, Michelle. So, we'll open up our public communication shortly. All right, so at this point, we'll go ahead and take roll calls. I will have City Clerk Alejandro Abila. Thank you. And Marie Contreras, is she off today? Oh.
She's right there.
Oh, okay, she's back there. Our city treasurer. Alrighty, that's fine. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, member of the public. Good evening. Councilmember Cruzbaca?
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
She will be here shortly.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricardo Pacheco?
Here.
And Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Present. Thank you very much, City Clerk Alejandro Abila for that. All right, so at this point, we have several presentations. One of the first ones that we have is the introduction of the new staff Community Development Director, Mr. Benjamin Martinez, and also for the... excuse me, City Planner, we have Ron Garcia. So we'll take Benjamin. Benjamin, is he here?
Yes.
Hey, what's up, bud? Thank you very much. All right, so at this point, introduction of a newly Community Development Director, Benjamin Martinez. Ben Martinez comes from the city of Almani with over 25 years of experience in the public and private sector. Most recently, Mr. Martinez was the Director of Economic Development for the city of Almani, where he headed a citywide revitalization effort consisting of seven hotels, thousands of market rates, and affordable residential units, and multiple retails, and industrial development. Previously, Mr. Martinez directed the Community Economic Development Department in the city of Pico Rivera from 2011 to 2016, and was employed by the City of National City Community Development Commission for 10 years, where he departed as Executive Director in 2006. Amongst other honors, Mr. Martinez was a recipient of four Awards of Excellence from the California Redevelopment Association, and in 2016, spearheaded the effort for the city of Pico Rivera to win the most business-friendly city award from the Los Angeles County Economic Development. And thank you very much for making a choice. Really. Thank you. We just want to let you know we're extremely impressed with your background, of course, interview exemplar, no doubt. So, our expectations are going to be high of you, and I'm extremely optimistic that you'll achieve the goals that we want in the City Baldwin Park. Thank you very much.
Mayor, welcome.
Councilmember Cruzbaca.
I'd like to welcome you. The other day, we had a meeting, and as you know, or as a lot of you know, I'm on the ad hoc, the COGS Ad Hoc Homeless Committee. We started about two and a half years ago to put the plan together for Measure H. And now that Measure H is coming to fruition, and the plan is going to be put in motion, one of the things that I said when I had a meeting the other day with Euriko and with Manny Carrillo from our staff, is that I was glad and hopeful that the person coming in from Almani, because I know Almani has been very, very progressive in bringing in affordable housing, veteran housing, and of course, working very closely with Mercy Housing. So I'm hoping that the expertise that you had in Almani will translate into Baldwin Park, because we're really looking forward to putting Measure H into motion. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, yes, Councilmember Susan Rubio.
Well, first of all, just welcome, but I believe, if I'm not mistaken, is that your family with you?
No, no, I'm a long time.
Okay, I wasn't sure, so I wanted to give you the opportunity to introduce some, but welcome. Thank you for being here.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, we'll go ahead and also introduce Mr. Ron Garcia. Is he present? Mr. Ron Garcia, how are you, my friend? Ron Garcia served in the city of West Covina for 13 years. He joined West Covina as an Associate Planner in 2006 and promoted to Senior Planner and most recently Planning Manager. During his tenure, he played an integral role in several key projects and initiatives, including the general plan update and the downtown plan, which accommodates an urban walkable environment. In 2017, Ron was honored with the Valvo Professionalism Award for always going above and beyond to represent the cities professionally, and for taking extreme pride in serving the residents of the city. Ron began his professional career as a planning intern for an affordable housing corporation in Berkeley, Berkeley, California, and the city of Commerce. Ron holds a Bachelor's of Arts degree in Political Science and City and Regional Planning from the University of Berkeley, and also completed courses in Historic Preservation from the University of Southern California. He is a member of the American Planning Association. Ron and his wife Julie reside in Whittier with their daughter Natalie. So, Ron, thank you very much for also choosing the City Baldwin Park. So, just want to say, Ron, get ready. Got a lot of work, buddy. Okay? All right, thank you very much.
So, Mayor?
All right, yes, Councilmember Susan Rubio.
That has to be someone's family, right? And so, I think they're your family?
My wife Julie and my...
Oh, they're in... Please turn up, let's welcome the family as well. The wife and child. Well, I would love for both of them to have the opportunity just to say a few words, if that's okay, Mayor?
Yes, absolutely.
And introduce themselves, and both of you, yes, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
City Council, City Staff, residents. Really looking forward to working with the council, the Planning Commission, city staff, and the residents. Also, really look forward to strengthening the values that the city of Baldwin Park has as far as its uniqueness, and working with the businesses and residents, in that it's unique in that... I'm sorry, I made a lot of words when I embraced my voice here. But essentially, just strengthening those values that make Baldwin Park unique for those people that live here, for those people that visit here, and also for the businesses. So, thank you. And humble...
Thank you very much. All right, Ben?
Mayor.
Mayor. Let Ben finish, then we'll... Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmember, city staff, general public. Thank you. Very excited to be here. I'd like to be chosen, and I choose you back. And you will have my full attention. You will have my full expertise, my full experience, and I look forward to the day that I do depart, working from the city. It will have to happen at some point, right? I hope to look back with pride for the accomplishments we will achieve together. That's what I've done in the past, and that's what I pledge to do with the city of Baldwin Park today, tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Cruzbaca.
Yes, and to Mr. Garcia, who thought that I was Ms. Garcia, but I'm really Cruzbaca. I just want to say the same thing that I told Ben. I'm really looking forward to working with you, because I know you come from West Covina. I work closely with Mayor Lloyd Johnson in the Ad Hoc Homeless Committee, and I know that he's very passionate about helping veterans and also a lot of our unfortunate, less unfortunate people. So, thank you very much. I'm hoping that you'll bring some of that experience that you had there to Baldwin Park, because we're going to need it when we hit the boots running with Measure H. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on with additional presentations. The first one that we have also... Councilmember Susan Rubio, you're going to be doing the presentations?
Yeah.
Of this one? Okay. Is there one or two? This one? Okay. Thank you.
Is Marley in the audience? Marley, oh, there she is. Come right up. Is your mom here with you? Come right up, too. How about Grandma? Where is Grandma?
Where's Grandma?
She gets to come up. Grandma used to be a bus driver for us for how many years?
Twenty-eight and a half.
Twenty-eight years and a half. So, thank you for being our driver.
But her family are longtime residents of Baldwin Park, Susan.
And also Baldwin Park in Irwindale, too, right? I just want to welcome Marley. She stopped by my office, and she was so excited to share that she was running for class precedent in her school, which is Bersh, correct? And so, she just wanted to see how she can, you know, win, and so she had a little conversation with me. So then she came back and said that she actually won. And so, I just want to read a little bit of her bio. So, congratulations to Marley Kenya Garcia. She's nine years old, in the fourth grade at Bersh Elementary School. She participated in running for student council and won the election for president. She is the first fourth-grade student to ever win the seat for president. Normally, it goes to a sixth grader, so let's give her a big round of applause. So, today, the City Council would like to honor Marley as president, and thank you so much for your service, and here's your certificate, and we want you to say a few words.
Let's say some words. Ready? Speak into the mic.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you, everyone.
It says Mayor. Okay, so you could go back to your... Put it right here. You're going to probably sit up here in 20, what, 50? Okay, right, okay. Let's get a picture. Come on over here. Where's Manny?
Oh, it's Manny.
Oh, no one's here.
Hey, Maria.
That's right, I saw his pictures. Hey, Maria.
Thank you. Let me get on this side, so you guys can be in the middle.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations. That's the only one, right?
So, that's what we hope to do, to inspire the next generation of little leaders. So, thank you, Marley, for coming. We're so proud of you.
Yes.
Alrighty, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, I don't have any other presentations. We'll go ahead and open up the public communications. Anyone wishing to speak, you have approximately three minutes. All right, thank you. Anyone want to come up? Thank you. Yeah, come on. How are you?
Very good. Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And citizens of Baldwin Park. My name is Steve Chan, and I'm with the grown folks. Just wanted to take the time to thank you again for all that you're doing for the city of Baldwin Park, and for all the efforts that you're putting forth to help the city of Baldwin Park grow. No pun intended. When the cannabis program was first introduced, there was much skepticism about, and many questions on whether or not this council could actually implement a program that would benefit the city and help it succeed in multiple ways. Now that the program has passed its infancy, and a lot of the kinks have been worked out, we're actually starting to see proof of all the benefits to the city of Baldwin Park. To name a few, there's been a huge wave of business growth resulting from widespread leasing and purchasing of properties all over the city, to an enormous increase of the city's current financial budget. It does really look like you guys were correct, and the city is right on track. I'm also very happy to announce that after searching far and wide, we were finally successful in finding our new business location and home, in which we plan to stay and grow into throughout these years. This new location of ours is a huge contrast from our original application location, which had many code violations and infrastructure issues. We really felt that if we didn't make this move to a newer state-of-the-art facility, which was in full compliance, meaning all of the city's codes and requirements, then we would be stuck in a financial tar pit that could have easily ruined us, like some licensees. But just to let you know, and to give you an update, the grown folks did submit our application for a new address. This was in the beginning of September. I understand that it still has not made it to the council's agenda yet, and I understand that's due to your enormous workload. We only ask that you try to help us expedite it to the city's agenda, so that we may have sufficient time to get our business up and running, and to avoid budget issues, as things are starting to tighten up on us, especially with the downtime coming with the holidays right around the corner. Lastly, I'm very happy to announce that we are completely up to date in all of our fees due to the city. I'm a believer, and I feel that my faith and the council's blessings have got us thus far. It hasn't been easy, but we are very close and very grateful. We would be honored if you can all join us for our grand opening ceremony, which you will be receiving an invitation for very soon. I wish blessings and success to the city of Baldwin Park, and thank you, everyone, very much. Take care.
All right, thank you. Hi, Cindy Michelle, how are you?
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Honorable Manuel Lozano, distinguished city council, city staff, and the citizens of Baldwin Park, hello there. My name is Sidney Jane Michelle, and I'm running for judge on the November ballot. Most of you have probably never met anyone that's running for judge on the November ballot, so I wanted to come and introduce myself to everybody, and I'm so honored to be endorsed by the honorable mayor of Baldwin Park. I'm thrilled and honored. Thank you so much. I just wanted to tell you briefly who I am. Hello, everybody. I'm the Senior Deputy City Prosecutor for the cities of Redondo Beach and Hermosa Beach, so I work with city staff, city council members, public works, all the time. I love cities. I love city government, and I think it's honorable what you all do, and I work with people like you every day. I have been the prosecutor for 13 years for those cities, and I'm unique among my colleagues, because prior to becoming a prosecutor, I was a criminal defense attorney and civil litigator for 10 years. So, I was a partner in a large firm downtown, so because I've done both types of law, I think I'm very well qualified to be a judge. I'm looking to make sure I don't run out of time. I have been endorsed by, in addition to the honorable mayor, the LA Times, three distinguished labor unions, 20 different law enforcement organizations, including the California Peace Officers Association, Los Angeles Police Protective League, LA County Police Chiefs, and many more. Also, Mexican-American Bar Association Political Action Committee, and the Italian-American Lawyers Association, and 100 endorsements. So, please feel free to go to my website. It's www.michelle, M-I-C-H-E-L, for judge.com. I know that people really don't know who the judges are. There's only four races. Hang in there on your ballot. You do governor, and assembly, and the ballot propositions, which are going to tire us all out, and at the very end are the judges. And I'm in seat 16, so I thank you so much for giving me this time, and hello, everyone.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Al Coletta.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm Mayor Pro Tem, distinguished council, staff, and the residents of Baldwin Park. My name is Alfred Coletta, and I too am a judicial candidate for November 6. I too wanted to put a face with the name. I serve here currently as a deputy district attorney for approximately 31 years. I've worked in East Los Angeles, 210 West Temple Street Central Criminal Courthouse, Norwalk, Whittier, Long Beach, and I've had various extensive trial assignments that have served Baldwin Park as well. I've worked in hardcore gangs, Major Narcotics and Forfeiture Division, Environmental Crimes OSHA Division, Major Frauds, and the Justice System Integrity Division, which is so necessary to have integrity in our court process. I too, in the past, have served my community for 12 years in the unincorporated area of Rossmore, which is at the west end of Orange County. I've served at its presence for three terms, and on the board as well for 12 years, and it was a delight to get to know the residents and to work with staff, and to learn where the issues are in the community. I too am endorsed by the Los Angeles Times, Mr. Steve Cooley, the National Latino Peace Officers Association, the Latin Prosecutors Association. I'm a past president of Italian-American Lawyers Association, and I would hope that you would go to my website and get a little more familiar with myself, other than what I've stated here this evening. My website is colettaforjudge.com, and I'll spell that for the record. It's C-O-L-E-T-T-A-F-O-R-J-U-D-G-E dot com. The reason I ask you to visit the website, because I want to bring beyond my prosecutorial experience. Formerly, I worked for the county council of Los Angeles. I advocated for abused children. I prosecuted sexual predators. And also, I have civil litigation experience while as a deputy district attorney, which is very unique, for pursuing matters of unfair business practices, basically fraud. And lastly, I have bankruptcy experience and bankruptcy appellate experience in federal court. I think I'm uniquely situated to preside as a judge. I'm well-suited, rated by the Metropolitan News Enterprise, endorsed by the Los Angeles Times. As I stated earlier, I was found to be an excellent jurist, prospectively speaking, because of the various trial assignments I've had, and because they have consulted with my opposing counsel, which is very important, we always want to have fairness, and I've been found by my opposing counsel in many branch courts to be fair and respectful to all litigants. And I would hope that I would have your curiosity to you to visit my website again, colettaforjudge.com, and I would have your vote on November 6 for office number four. I thank you for the community as well for listening.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Alright, moving on with public communication.
Hello, good evening, honorable mayor, city council, Baldwin Park staff, and Baldwin Park residents. My name is Chase Fidler. I'm engineering assistant here at the city of Baldwin Park, and I came here to invite you to a community meeting we'll be having from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. tomorrow at the Baldwin Park Adult School. The community meeting will be regarding the city's SSARP, which is the Systemic Safety Analysis Report Program. The SSARP is a grant given to the city from Caltrans, and it's a grant given to the city from Caltrans, and it will go over an approach that the city will take... Sorry. Sorry, I'm getting a little bit nervous.
Okay, that's fine.
So, it's a systemic safety analysis report program. It was given from Caltrans to the city, and the report will discuss a collision analysis study and determine high collision rates in the city, and from that high collision rates, we could develop an approach to bring safety improvements to the city. Our first community meeting was held back in August, and we got the opportunity to meet with the community and discuss our SSARP so far and our findings, and they gave us good feedback and responses to further developing our SSARP. Tomorrow, we're going to be aiming to meet with more towards the business owners and people who run and operate businesses in Baldwin Park, and getting their feedback and responses to our SSARP study so far to further develop the report. Again, this will be held at the Baldwin Park Adult School from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., and if you have any questions, you could contact the engineering division, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, while they're coming up, can I just give the address real quickly for them, just in case? It's 4640 Main Avenue, Baldwin Park. Thank you.
I said the adult? All right, go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Lozano, Mayor Pro Tem Pacheco, councilmember, city staff, and the community of Baldwin Park. My name is Daniel Levanos, and I am your city ambassador for One Legacy. One Legacy is an organ procurement organization, bridging the patients to the transplant centers. Currently, there is over 114,000 patients waiting for the gift of life, with 21,000 in the state of California alone. Sadly, we lose 20 patients daily waiting for the gift of life, and every 10 minutes, someone is added to this list. To register for organ donation, you can go to our website, www.donatlifecalifornia.org, si al español, www.donavita california.org. Plus, there are other languages to register for organ donation. Together with the DMV, we have signed up 14.9 million future donors. Thank you for having the pink dot on your driver's license. It's that time of year again for the 130th Tournament of Roses Parade. The theme for the 2019 Rose Parade is the Melody of Life, which celebrates music, the universal language. Two-time organ recipient and tournament of Rose's first African-American president, Gerald Frieden quotes, "Music has the power to not only bring us together, but take us back to memories and moments as nothing else can. Rhythm, melody, harmony, and color all come together to create the soundtrack that defines our lives." Donate Life's 16th Annual Rose Parade float is the Rhythm of the Heart. Depict its exciting design that invites parade audiences to experience the music of Africa in a vibrant, colorful float that features musical instruments and colorful artifacts that represent different African communities and cultures. We would like to invite the mayor and the city council to our exclusive first-look event on December 12, 2018, from 9:00 to 12:00 p.m. to experience our float in an intimate setting meeting and meet our One Legacy honorees, riders, walkers, and donor photograph families. I would like to introduce you to Jolene Vargas, one of your own residents, who's been selected with the One Legacy Foundation to represent us on our float to share Rhythm of the Heart. She is a kidney recipient. I'll let her talk after. I am a liver transplant... Please RSVP by November 30. I am a liver transplant recipient. I received my gift of life on December 27, 2003, the greatest gift I ever received from a stranger. Remember, one person can save the lives of eight people through organ donation, and enhance the lives of 75 people or more through tissue and cornea donation. Thank you, Mayor Lozano.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Pacheco, councilmembers, city staff, and the community of Baldwin Park for giving me this opportunity to announce what One Legacy's mission is, saving and healing lives through eye, organ, and tissue donation, comforts the families we serve, and inspires our communities to donate life. Now, this is Jolene.
Mayor?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Cruzbaca.
I just want to say, because I saw last year, and I'm just curious, I know that you give the first look to, you know, private viewing, but you also have an opportunity for people to participate and help you with the float decorated, don't you, prior to the actual unveiling of the float?
Yes. Actually, we have registration for decorating has already started. You can go to the donateliferosefloat.org to sign up, to register, to sign up, to become a decorator.
And will it still be in Irwindale?
As far as we know, it's going to, all decorating days will be in the city of Irwindale.
Okay. I just want to say thank you, and as everyone else, I'm a donor. Thank you very much for what you do. We really appreciate it.
And Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Cruzbaca.
And I want to thank you. I have participated and been to the unveiling and so forth, which has been a beautiful morning event, and it's really wonderful what happens, and what a difference you can make in someone's life by either being a donor or as a recipient, as we saw that morning. But I'm real excited, because a good friend of mine will be the Grand Marshal, which is Shaka Khan.
Oh, wow.
And so, I'm real excited about that, to see her as the Grand Marshal. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank both of you, because you're...[663.13][663.13](APPLAUSE).
Hi.
Yes, hello.
I'm a resident here at Baldwin Park my whole life, actually 51 years. I've had two kidney transplants. I'm actually on the list for a third, but I was chosen this year because of the volunteer hours that I have done. This last year alone, I did 408 to make people more aware of what we can do to help others. I would really be honored if our city council, Mayor, Protem Mayor, would be there for our first look, since I am a resident of Baldwin Park. We also have rose dedications, too. Got it?
All right.
So, we also have that available. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Want to let you know that we're extremely proud of you as a resident of Baldwin Park, and as an example of, as it said in Spanish, "Si se puede." Thank you. Thank you very much.[718.32][718.32](APPLAUSE).
I just have, hello, City Council, Baldwin Park Residents. I only have a few things to say. Seems like every time something comes up in the paper, nobody ever brings it to your people's attention. I know that you read the paper, at least I hope you do. All I'm saying is, this should be investigated to find out if it's true or not, you know? I know that you people up there don't care what we say or do say, but it comes to a point where you need to find out if this is, uh, this came in the San Gabriel Tribune. So, it's not like I made it up, Mayor. Can you read this, or do you just trash it after I gave it to you people? You people got to understand one thing. This is a free country, and every time I come in here, I make comments, I'm told under the Constitution of the United States, you can say anything you want, and so on, and so on. Well, Mayor, if you don't like it, get on the boat and leave. That's how simple it is. We have the right to criticize you people, especially when you people think everything you do is correct. But let me tell you, the city council in Covina, West Covina, Irwindale, El Monte, Baldwin Park, anywhere, the city council in downtown Outlay, as much as you guys might think they're always right, they're not always right. And you people think every time you do something, that's the only way that us 80,000 or 75,000 people got to agree with. Well, you're wrong. Maybe those other percentage don't want to argue with you, because you know why? Because from week to week, or from month to month, all you people do is just listen to us, and then don't say nothing. You don't answer anybody. Only one guy here has answered one question that I asked, and he showed me proof. The rest of you, you don't care. We ask you for proof. You know what? You just ignore us. How hard is it to answer somebody when you ask them, they ask you guys and ladies a question? You know, it seems to me that you're supposed to work for the residents of Baldwin Park. You people don't do that. You claim you do, but you don't. You know why? Because this lady over here raised our taxes again. I got my bill, and so claimed assessment is a tax. But it's not a tax. You people lie like everybody else does in Congress. You don't tell the truth to the public. Think about it. How many times you lie to the public? You're sitting here today, and I guarantee you, somebody in that group will lie to somebody in this group out here in the audience. Think about it. Have a good day.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Moving along with public communication. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members, and audience. My name is Veronica Lopez. Here on behalf of Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio, here to invite council and city, city members and city, and the community to an informational hearing on domestic violence in conjunction, in partnership with Assemblymember Ed Chow and Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio. We invite you to come and hear us, sorry, informational hearing on domestic violence and the intersection with technology. It is, will be held on Friday, October 26, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the city of Duarte. It will be in the City Community Center, 1600 Huntington Drive, Duarte. We ask you come and hear what the state has to offer as far as information, and how domestic violence and technology intersect. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing that from State Assemblymember. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
City Council, city staff, and community. Imagine it's 2:30 p.m. The school bell rings at Burch or Jones Junior High in Baldwin Park Unified School District, and all kids all over Baldwin Park are dismissed for the day. But where do these children go? Many hard-working parents still lack the means to pay for after-school programs, and some kids have no one at home to supervise them. My name is Irene Bobadilla, and I am a proud San Gabriel Valley community member, and I'm the General Manager at ThinkTogether, a nonprofit organization dedicated to bringing after-school programs and expanded learning opportunities to Baldwin Park. ThinkTogether not only provides a safe place for children to go after school, but also homework assistance and academic support, healthy snacks, physical activity, and opportunities to explore new subjects like robotics and coding. We see every day how families depend on state-funded after-school programs, which are supported by California's After-School Education and Safety Program, or ACES for short. But lawmakers and Sacramento question the value of after-school programs, and ACES continues to be underfunded. On October 25, we will be a part of a nationwide celebration called Lights On After School to showcase the important role after-school programs play in the lives of childrens, families, and communities. We are leading the fight to secure a sustainable statewide funding solution for after-school programs, and Lights On After School event will bring greater awareness to our collective cause to ensure that children of Baldwin Park and all over California have access to high-quality and well-funded after-school programs. You're all invited to experience the power of after-school by attending our ThinkTogether Lights On After School event on Thursday, October 25, at 4:00 p.m., hosted at Jones Junior High School. We encourage you to come and meet the children, parents, staff, and community members whose lives are impacted by after-school programs. Thank you for your time, and we hope to see you at Jones Junior High on October 25.
Ms. Bobadilla, I just wanted to, excellent program, by the way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What would you guys do? Thank you.
Thank you for your support.[1101.63][1101.63](APPLAUSE).
All right. Moving along with public communication.
Thomas Carey, former resident of Baldwin Park. Now, it's a little bit controversial, but I'm going to go there anyway. Some else, City Council, but the women are always crying that, oh, they've been done wrong, the Me Too movement, and all this crap. What about what the women have done to some of the men? We men have been abused, too. Women have abused men in ways of having, in marriages and stuff, and there should be paternity tests at all births to make sure that that child is yours, so you don't end up paying child support for something she did that you don't know that she did. There's a lot of victimization, women doing things, too, tricking men into buying expensive gifts, and rings and things like that, and things for their family here or in Mexico or someplace like that. That's sexual abuse, too. They're using their goods, we'll just say, and their looks to manipulate men into doing things they might not have done otherwise, or did otherwise, rather. And they cry that they don't get equal pay. Well, I've worked in a lot of places, the women got equal pay. I've not been my experience with that. So, and this thing with Kavanaugh, that's a good example of how vindictive a woman can be. Look what Dianne Feinstein did to Blasey Ford. Look at that. You probably watched it, I did, with disgust. I was so glad I changed my party affiliation on August 1st from Democrat to Republican. That would have done it for me anyway. It's just so unfair. A woman can accuse somebody of something, and it's true, the mob jumps on, and the more people they can get to accuse you of something, the more guilty you are. You're supposed to be innocent until proven otherwise, but that isn't the way it is, is it? So, and it's, is crying, oh, the victim, the victim. Yeah, a lot of women are victims of men, but they're just as, they victimize men just as much. And what about gay men? Men they know are gay, and they try to persuade them to have straight sex. No should be the same for a man as it is for a woman. It's supposed to be, but that isn't the way it is, is it? That's controversial. And then also, women trying to make other women have sex with them that they know aren't interested in that type of sex, but they don't care. So, this thing of crying, oh, I'm the victim. Well, a lot of these women that were on there protesting and crying about Kavanaugh victimized a lot of men, too. And that should be looked into. We too, men, have been abused, too. Time's up? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Appreciate that. All right. Moving along with public communication. All righty. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Heidi Lopez.
Margaret Rosales.
And we are juniors, and we are here representing the dual-language program at Baldwin Park High School. We gave flyers to you guys. They should be set with you guys. We would like to invite you all to our, to everyone, the community also. We would like to invite you all to our event, which is the Day of the Dead. It will be taking place at the Baldwin Park High School on November 1st from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. The event's going to have amazing activities for students, for younger kids, for anyone in the community. It's really special. We've been working on it for a couple of months already, and to be honest, the dual-language program is such a special thing in our community, especially in the Latino community, that we're allowing new generations to learn the Spanish language, something that was denied to a lot of Chicanos many years ago. And growing up in the dual-language program has been seriously amazing. I have so many people that I know now, a community, and to be able to bring this event alive and have everyone come and enjoy it is one amazing thing. We're going to have altars, too. It's going to be a contest, and people are going to be able to express themselves in there. They're going to be able to spread their culture, and we're all just going to understand each other and have a really good day. And we were also wondering if anyone in the city council would like to be one of the judges for our altar contest?
I would like to be one.
Yeah, we got a letter already in the mail, I think, and, yeah.
We'll all be there.
They asked that we are S.P. online, so we did. I don't know who else did, but thank you for your invitation.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
I was there last year, and you guys had a very elaborate show, by the way.
I want to say, ladies, congratulations for coming and speaking to us. That's very courageous, and we really appreciate you taking that step. And I want to say that I did teach dual-language, so I agree with you. It's one of the best programs Baldwin Park has offered. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night. All right.[1435.42][1435.42](APPLAUSE). All righty. Hey, is that Christina? Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, and community. My name is Christina Cardenas, and I'm a project manager with Evan Brooks Associates. I've come tonight to give a few updates on the Baldwin Park Commuter Connector Express line that the city's been working on about two years. Just want to provide some updates with regards to the official launch, and updates with regards to the ribbon-cutting ceremony. The official launch is slated for November 5. That's a Monday. The ribbon-cutting ceremony is slated for Saturday, October 27. And just a little bit about the commuter connector express line. It's going to provide two brand-new trolleys to enhance current circulation in Baldwin Park to support the teal and the pumpkin line. The great thing about it is that it connects people that are using the MetroLink to key destinations in the city, including Kaiser Permanente, which is one of the largest employers in the city. The event will allow people to preview the trolleys for the first time, a first ride for the first time. The event will be October 27, from 10:00 to 12:00 at the Arc. We will be, we've been working very closely with key partners, including Kaiser Permanente. We've been working with Reyna del Jaro and Maria Langarque to bring Michelle Robinson, who is the Medical Center Administrator, who will be providing some remarks in addition to Metro, and thanks to council, will be having some remarks from council as well with regards to the line. The partnership with Kaiser has been from day one in conducting an analysis to determine the route, the stops, and how to best encourage employer, employees, and members at Kaiser to use the line. So, we're hoping that this partnership will allow the line to have consistent participation by that population, in addition to the public. The event will allow people to ride the line, and once they do arrive to Kaiser, there'll be activities for the kids. There'll be pumpkin giveaway, kids' fall crafts, as well as a tour of the facility. And we did want to make sure that we did remind the public again about the launch. There are flyers in the back for the ribbon-cutting ceremony that will be taking place again October 27. We encourage everyone to come. We've also been working with community groups, senior center, other key stakeholders in the city to ensure that this new express line is highly publicized, not only at the kickoff, but at the ribbon-cutting, but after. So, some key publicity at community events after. So, just want to thank council again. Thanks, Sam Gutierrez, who's leading the project, to really provide again better circulation and improved mobility for encouraging people to use public transportation. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Christina, can you repeat the ribbon-cutting just once again, please?
Sure. So, the ribbon-cutting ceremony will, October 27. It allows, so, the community has been invited to the Arc, and they'll be able to actually see the trolleys. There'll be two trolleys that will be at the facility. They'll be able to, the ribbon-cutting will be on the trolley. They'll be able to ride, you know, explore the trolley, ride it from the Arc to Kaiser Permanente, to just kind of be the first to kind of experience that line, that trolley.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Cruzbaca.
I'm so excited about this. Sam knows. I'm like a little kid. It reminds me of the red car when I was a little girl. But I was at Target here in Baldwin Park the other day, and it was quiet in the morning, and they said, wait till the afternoon, when all the people from Kaiser come in here. So, I'm hoping that Target, or that shopping center, is one of the stops.
It is.
Because I know that they'll be real happy about that.
And the public will receive the maps, the official map, as well as the schedule, and they'll all be available on the city's website as well, along with the pumpkin line, the teal line. So, it'll be housed in the same area, but definitely that is the public, and the members of the public were able to provide key destinations where they would like to see additional stops that the pumpkin and the teal line, you know, fell short. So, they, so definitely provides more destination stops.
Well, thank you. I'm excited about this.
Yes, we look forward to seeing you all on October 27.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Christina. Appreciate that. All right. Moving along with public communication.
Good evening, Mayor Lozano, Mayor Protem Pacheco, and council members. I'm Valerie Munoz, Councilmember for the City of La Puente, and I'm actually here to speak on item number seven that's on your agenda tonight. I'm currently also, more importantly, your representative on the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority, representing cities with non-pumping rights, and I humbly request your support in city's nomination for the reappointment to the WQA. I was elected back in 2016, and one of the pledges I made to local communities was to keep you informed and provide much-needed attention to this security of clean water efforts here in the San Gabriel Valley. I feel like I've kept that promise. The WQA was created by California State Legislature back in 1993, and the whole purpose of that agency is to spearhead the cleanup efforts here in the San Gabriel Valley. As of today, over 81 tons of contamination has been removed from our local groundwater, and that's due to the agency's efforts. The WQA was created by California State Legislature back in 1993, and the whole purpose of that agency is to spearhead the cleanup efforts here in the San Gabriel Valley. As of today, over 81 tons of contamination has been removed from our local groundwater, and that's due to the agency's efforts. The Water Quality Authority has secured over $500 million in polluter settlements and additional $150 million in state and federal funding. The current projections for the entire cleanup efforts in the San Gabriel Basin would cost approximately $1.3 billion as of today. And as the San Gabriel Basin provides 90% of our local drinking water supply, restoring the basin is a priority, and maintaining a stable rate structure, secure our water sources, and provide safe and really reliable drinking water for our residents is extremely important. As your board member, I have worked to hold polluters accountable and make sure that they met their obligations. Since elected to the board, I was instrumental in securing the $225 million that which will contribute to additional cleanup efforts until 2027, just the Baldwin Park operable unit itself. And I've also worked and helped securing $80 million in Pop position three funding for treatment and remediation of contamination groundwater throughout the San Gabriel Valley. One other project that I was also really instrumental was the Puente Valley Operable Unit. The six operable units here in the San Gabriel Basin, that operable unit had no remediation done in the 30 years that the agency has been installed. And as of September 20th, the construction of a $40 million treatment facility broke ground. Northrop Grumman had taken responsibility of their actions and were underway. The San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority is an important part of our community as we continue efforts to secure the funding for treatment remediation. I'll continue to work diligently for the City of Baldwin Park if given the opportunity, and I respectfully request your consideration for nomination. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and you've done an excellent job, Valerie.
Thank you.
Compliment you.
Thank you.
All righty. Okay, so at this point, move on with public communication. See, no further interest, and I'll declare the public communication closed. But before we go on, Mark Schenfier, who's in the back, Mr. Dallas Cowboy, I didn't see you back there. Requested also, we could look at the traffic flow. Sam, we need a stop sign or one of those, one of those, what do you call it, those LED stop signs right on Puente? And what's the street? Come on up here real quick, 'cause there was a lot of traffic and an accident, and a car went right through that home.
Good evening. As y'all know me, I've been living in here for 56 years. On Millbury and Puente, I've, I mean, it's, it's dangerous. Chief, you need to get your mord officer there because he will get his quota real quick, because they break the law so much. They speed, these parents are in so much of a hurry to get there 'cause they don't plan their time accordingly. We just had a student that got hit three weeks ago. If something happens, it's gonna happen, someone's gonna get killed. I mean, this is a safety issue. I've been saying this over and over and over. We need to get something done. Just a flashing light, that's all we need, and we need some more officers out there. I don't think the school police are doing their job enough because they're speeding right down my street. I mean, you guys can park my driveway. I don't care, but we need to take care of this, 'cause someone's gonna seriously get hurt, and I am the safety of the kids. I'm gonna be leaving the City of Baldwin Park as I am moving. It is gonna break my heart. I wanna tell you guys, all you guys did a fantastic job to the City of Baldwin Park. I got to sell the house for my mom to move on to better, better my life, but I wanna thank every single one of you for the wonderful and the outstanding job from, from you, all the way to the chief, to Cruzbaca, all the way to Mr. Lozano, Rubio, Pacheco. You guys, you guys did a fantastic job. Thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. But please, look in this as a safety issue, because think of it as if it was your kid that got hit. I mean, we need to think about that. I mean, I'm here for the safety of the kids. I don't have no kids, but I do look out for these kids. They are my kids. And Chief of Police, you guys are doing a good job. I mean, I mean, you guys, you guys cleaned up the city dramatically. My dad was a retired police captain for Valhalla. So, I do follow the law enforcement. But again, thank you, please. Thank you very much, and please, look in this seriously, because someone's gonna get killed, and we don't want that. We don't want another lawsuit. Please.
Okay, Mark, thank you very much. Mr. Dallas Cowboy, show him your tattoo. Show the council the tattoo on your back.
[laughing]
Okay, all right.
I'll just turn it off.
All right. All right, now, real quick, Mark, we're also, we, we, he was supposed to be, we're supposed to have a tree plant for his mother during this year, and unfortunately, there was an error in between, so I'll speak, we could pass on to Manny Carrillo, so his mom. How many years were you guys in Baldwin Park?
Okay, my mom was there 50, 50. She was the original house on the left. She was number three on the Baldwin Park.
52 years ago, you said?
Oh, well, my mom bought it in 1952, yeah.
Wow, okay.
About half a year. Eighteen thousand dollars. The mortgage was seventy.
You mean, 66 years. That's how long your mom was here. Six years. I was gonna say, all right, buddy.
All right, guys.
Take care.
Good night.
Go L.A. Rams. All right, let's go. All right, so at this point, we're going over to consent calendar, so councilmembers wishing to pull any item?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull number eight.
Okay, number eight's requested by, by councilmember Cruzbaca. All right, number eight. Any others? All right, so I don't see any councilmembers proposing any other items, so at this point, I'll go ahead and move consent calendars with the exception of number eight. That is my motion.
Second.
Any objections? See, not so move. At this point, I'd like to, Councilmember Cruzbaca, the approval of resolution entitled a resolution of the city council of the City of Baldwin Park, County of Los Angeles, State of California, approving the submission of Declaration of Shelter Crisis Pursuit to SB 850, Chapter 48, statutes of 2018, and government code Los Angeles control. So, at this point, Councilmember Cruzbaca.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to congratulate Valerie. I don't know if she realizes that she was reappointed to her position. So, thank you. It moves real quickly, but I thought I would congratulate you. No, that's okay.
Congratulations.
That's all right. The reason that I pulled it is because this is, like I said, this is very exciting to see some of the Measure H monies and also some of the grants that will be available. And I, I do have to say that Baldwin Park has been considered like the model of, of the cities that planned or bought into or worked on this plan, because it seems like we have all the elements collaborating. We have our police department, our Parks and Rec. We have different faith-based organizations that have collaborated, like I said, to come forward and very, very hands-on when it comes to attending meetings and being a part of some of the decisions as far as bringing some of those monies to help during, for the, not only for the homeless, but also affordable housing, permanent housing, transitional housing that will be available in the future. So, the reason I pulled it after that is because I would like for Eureka to do a, a short presentation since Manny Carrillo is, is out of town, because she knows better than I do what's going on on the ground. So, thank you, Eureka.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruzbaca. Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Cruzbaca, so good evening, Honorable Mayor.
Go ahead.
And members of the city council. Like Ms., Councilmember Cruzbaca mentioned, I'm here on behalf of our citywide action plan for the homeless, homelessness implementation plan. And I wanted to give you guys first and foremost a thank you and an acknowledgement for always supporting our efforts in ensuring that all of our documentation gets in on time and passing all of our resolutions, all of our agenda items that needed to be in place in order for us to be where we are today, getting ready for the 2018 Cities Homelessness Plan Implementation Phase. So, as you know, cities play a vital role in preventing and combating homelessness around Los Angeles County. So, we will like to take this opportunity to pass the resolution that you have before you so that we can be in alignment with other cities to achieve the goal of applying for the RFP that is now being public with the Los Angeles Homeless Initiative and the Home for Good Collaborative. So, the first phase of that RFP has already been released, and the city will be eligible. There's four pockets of funding that we're looking after. Two at the macro level, exploring partnerships with neighboring cities, including cities of El Monte and South El Monte, as well as on the individual level, we're looking into a second priority area that will fund city homelessness plans that aligns with what we had, with the study that was conducted here about three months ago. So, in an effort to align that and really move this forwards into the implementation process, we ask that you please consider the resolution tonight, as well as the collaborative efforts that we have with the neighboring cities so we can go for the maximum funding eligibility. So, with that said, under priority one, most of the funding will increase supply for interim and permanent supportive housing for people experiencing homelessness. And that makes a great sense to collaborate with other cities around us, because sometimes individual cities have certain challenges that due to zoning or land availability, we're unable to provide that scope and that level of service that these homeless residents need. Therefore, exploring opportunities with our neighboring cities will support our efforts and align us to be able to get there. Under priority area two, those are more of the systematic citywide services that will enhance the county services systems for those experiencing or even at risk of becoming homelessness. So, that is our service delivery models. That is more support for our public, Public Works Department. It is more capacity results for our public, our police departments, as well as like looking into safe storage containers and all of the things that we can do at the citywide level. So, I thank you once again for always being in support of all of the efforts that we have put in. Like Councilmember Cruzbaca mentioned, the City of Baldwin Park is seen as the lead in the San Gabriel Valley with the collaborative efforts of the COG as well as the L.A. County. So, thank you. And if there's any questions?
No, just wanna say thank you for doing that, that work. I know that you guys have been very diligently having charrettes, what we used to call, so people can understand what's going on and what we're doing and taking input, and all that is important. So, thank you. And I know Manny's not here, so I just wanna kinda add, we did go to the senior dance this weekend, and so all of us were there, I believe, and so thank your staff and Manny and everyone for a, for a great night.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
It was really fantastic. Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Thank you. My question, Eureka, is regarding the timeframe for implementation, because I do see that our homeless population is growing, and I'm seeing new faces. And so, what is the timeframe for implementation?
So, for the first phase of the, this RFP, the deadline to submit is November 3rd, so it is a pretty quick implementation process, at least the application. And the planning, the implementation of this current RFP and the grant that we're seeking will be an 18-month period. So, we need to start rolling now. They, if, if granted, the funding, the first pieces of the rollout, they said announcements will be made in January of 2019, and then start rolling out thereafter. So, it is an 18-month period. A lot of it is planning, especially at the macro level with the other cities, to get those land acquisitions, some feasibility studies, in addition to actual hands-on, maybe capacity building, having additional housing support and, and all of that. So, there are very different pockets of funding as well. The one, the resolution that you guys have before you tonight is for the emergency, declaring an emergency shelter crisis. So, that is a separate pocket of funding through HEAP, and that one will be, they're looking at the, probably releasing it at the end of this year or early next year.
So, that's good to know. I, I know that there is a lot of planning right now, which is great, because we do have to plan for a long-term solution. But meanwhile, my questions are, how are we doing any outreach and providing services to the individuals that are currently in our community? So, perhaps we can have a conversation offline regarding that, because again, I do see that the efforts are, you know, they're, it's great to see this collaboration that's happening, happening regionally, but my concern is that the population meanwhile continues to grow in our community, so. But with that, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the item.
A second.
Any objections? See, not so move. All right, thank you very much. All right, so at this point...
I just wanna say one thing. One thing is that, and I wanna thank staff, because I started back on working with the COG AdHOC Homeless Committee about two and a half years ago, with Joe Lyons, Becky Shavlin, where it was just a skeleton group of people. I was introduced to the AdHOC Committee by Rachel Barbosa at that time, who was working with Supervisor Solis, and she said, "I really think that someone from Baldwin Park should be a part of being on this committee." And this was way before Measure H. So, for two and a half years, we put together, this was in 20, the late 2015. I was at a, at a meeting the other day when it was Becky Shavlin brought it to my attention. In 2016 is when we actually started working on the plan, meeting every Monday, every month for a year to, so that all the 17 or 18 cities that were working on the plan could work and work together and see how we could do this collaboratively, collectively, because we knew that it was a problem that we all shared with transients that travel from one city to another, depending on what type of resources there are. So, I wanna thank you, because it's been a long process, and it has been a wonderful process that I, that I'm very happy to see finally come to fruition. And also, like I said, Baldwin Park has been so great, because everyone has collaborated and has joined together from our police department to Parks and Rec. Everyone has joined in to try to make this work, and it is. And the plan is ready to move forward, Ms. Garcia. It is ready to move forward. Once we receive that monies, we, we hit the ground running, because we are one of the few cities that are ready to move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me ask you a question. So, are we joining up with South El Monte and El Monte? Is that still the?
Yes, we're exploring El Monte and South El Monte.
Right, because I mean, I was at, I mean, they encouraged that we team up with cities, because that's a better, better way, because it's so competitive, of course, right?
It is very competitive, and we are also looking into larger funding allocations that way. There is no maximum. And when dealing with these, you know, issues, the land acquisition, maybe hotel motel conversions, it is a pricey price tag.
Sure is.
In addition to the permanent supportive housing services that are onsite, provided with the housing itself. So, if there's additional challenges or additional obstacles that the residents may face, then there's wraparound supportive services at these facilities. So, that is also put into place, so.
All right.
Yes, and there's also some of, what they found, and the reason, Mayor, was because, you know, the City of Duarte and Irwindale were the first one to sort of partner together, because they share the riverbed off of Foothill. And so, they felt that there were, the best way that I can explain it so that everybody understands is, let's say, El Monte, because they're, they're ahead of the game with shelters and wanting to build shelters with Mercy Housing and the Veterans Housing. El Monte would probably have the shelters. However, Baldwin Park can send some of the people to their shelters. But Baldwin Park can have something else, like the storage or whatever, so that El Monte and South El Monte can use our storage facilities, because there is a big issue with civil rights matters that have come on, when police officers come in or somebody comes in, sheriffs, to, to take somebody's belongings. It's very serious, especially when you're dealing with medication. So, those are some of the things that we felt that together, we all have something. Here we go again, to complete the puzzle. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eureka.
Thank you, and including the jurisdictional between police, sheriff, just creating that access. So, thank you all, and thank you for supporting.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. I'm moving along with, all right, so at this point, we're gonna go ahead. Thank you. So, at this point, we're gonna go over to, we, number 10, which is a joint public hearing by the city council of the City of Baldwin Park and the Board of Directions of the Municipal Financing Authority and approval of the Resolution Number 2018, 299, a resolution of the city council of the City of Baldwin Park approving proceeds to finance rail crossing safety improvements at the Pacific, Mersey, and Foster Avenue at McDevitt Street Crossing and from Measure M revenue bonds to be issued by the Baldwin Park Municipal Financing Authority, approving the form and authorizing the distribution of preliminary official statement and improvement-related action. Boy, this is long overdue. Let me go ahead and open up the public hearing. Yes, yes.
One moment, please. Before, I wanna backtrack to number eight. Did the city clerk understand that it's number eight, which is the approval of the resolution entitled a resolution to the city, of the city council of the City of Baldwin Park? Did you understand what the, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And for the record, Mr. Mayor, that was a motion by Councilmember Garcia and a second by... Yes, that is correct. That is correct.
I can give a brief overview.
Yes, okay, I'm gonna go ahead and have the seal, go ahead and give an overview.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council and the audience. At a previous meeting, the city council did give staff direction to proceed with bonding against our future Measure M revenue bonds.
Yeah.
against our future Measure M revenue bonds. This would allow the city to design, construct, and build the railroad safety improvements throughout the city, which would make these crossings then quiet zone-ready so that the residents could enjoy peace and we could reduce the noise at the crossings. So, with this, it allows us to get these improvements done decades ahead of schedule as opposed to doing them one at a time or waiting for the funding to roll in. So, with that, we recommend you hold the hearing and approve these recommendations.
All right, so at this point, I will open up the public hearing. So, anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone opposing? Oh, oh, okay, all right. All righty.
No, um-
Come in. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Beatriz. I'm so glad to listen about and read the agenda about Measure M, working hard to pass the Measure M in our community by our necessity, also always asking Mr. Sam Lutier for, what is the funding for crossing and the railroads. Thank you, hopefully you approve this motion.
Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak on the public hearing? Okay, this is, this is in favor. Go ahead.
Hello, Kevin Rooney, resident. I would just like to bring up the issue, along with the railroad crossings, that residents are, a lot of residents have been coming to me complaining, especially by Foster School. The MetroLink cleans the drain so the water could go out, but it clogs up right away because there's dirt all around it. So, if the city could come up with a way to go directly to the sewer from our street instead of having it on the railroad tracks there, it would be a lot better and I feel like the residents wouldn't have to walk through three feet of water every time they're taking their kids to school. And that is on Foster, by Foster School. So, if you guys could please address that, I'd appreciate it.
We can look into that.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, anyone opposing? You know, interest, I now declare the public hearing closed. So, at this point, I'm going to go ahead and motion, hold a joint public hearing and after considering testimonials, approve Resolution Number 2018-299, approving the proceeding to finance rail crossing safety improvements, approving the form and authorizing execution of an installment sale agreement and a board purchase agreement, approving the form and authorizing distribution of the preliminary official statement and approving related actions of the issuance of Measure M revenue bond by the Ballpark Municipal Finance Authority in amount of not to exceed 7.2 million.
Second.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
That's fine, that's fine. We'll go ahead and second, I'll make second. At this point, we'll go ahead and go to item two, which is authorize execution of the contract with her and company advisors, LLC Financial Advisors and Quint and LLP Bond Council and Disclosure Council and accept proposal to underwrite the bond, Ramirez Inc. and where, let me see. Okay, so, all right, that's my motion. It was seconded by Councilmember Cruzbaca. Any objections? See none, so move. All right, this one, we'll go over to this accessory agency, which is to dissolve the Community Development Commission of the City of Ballpark's Treasury Report, August 2018. All right, at this point, I'd like to make a motion for the consent.
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. At this point, I'd like to move for German of the successor agency.
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. Thank you. All right, request by Mayor Potem Ricardo Pacheco. Mayor Potem Ricardo Pacheco would like to discussion and direction to staff to draft a letter to state representative for mayor and council signatures expressing this pleasure and the delays in the construction of the Interstate 10 near Fuente. The delays are harming businesses in an already disadvantaged community. Furthermore, Caltrans has not been responsive in quickly resolving the right-of-way and landscape problems at the location, this location. So, true. Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And the reason I bring this up is, over the last few years, we've seen a lot of work on our freeways that Caltrans has been doing a number of improvements along the 10 Interstate. And I think that a number of these projects along Baldwin Park, our section of the freeway, has, the projects have not been done in a timely fashion. We have not been treated equally as other communities along the freeway, including aesthetics along the freeway, the upkeep of the, of our area along the freeway with regard to removal of trash or graffiti along that freeway. Also, the off-ramps and on-ramps take an extremely, a large amount of time to complete. If you look at other, some of the other off-ramps near West Covina, Covina, they're done at a much faster pace than our particular ramps, or the Baldwin Park off-ramp or the one by Fuente Avenue, I'm sorry, has been closed for a long time. I've seen other off-ramps started and completed way before our off-ramp is. We've been doing ours, I don't know for how many months. It's not good for our local businesses. It's not good for those trying to travel and get through work. It causes a lot of traffic within our area that we're there. And I think that we need to talk to Caltrans about it, bring it up to the highest level that we can, and let them know that we're not satisfied with the, with the work that's being done along our freeway. It needs to be done quicker and it needs to be done properly. Also, the landscaping along, under the underpass, it just always looks, you know, blighted. It's just the worst that I've ever seen and it's been that way for a long time, for many years. And I think that now that Caltrans is there trying to fix the freeways, they need also fix Baldwin Park. And they, I feel that because they think we're disadvantaged community, that we have no voice. And I think we, you know, we need to start to speak up and force Caltrans to clean up the areas along the freeway that are in Baldwin Park, just like they do when they take care of the more affluent communities along the freeway. I think they should take care of Baldwin Park just like if we're an affluent community. And if you look right there on Fuente Avenue at that underpass, it's just horrendous. They never take care of it. It's all dirt. There's no landscaping that's been placed there. And I think that they need to finish that off-ramp as expeditiously as they can. That off-ramp has been closed for a long time and I get a lot of complaints from residents as to when it's going to be open. Everybody has to take Big Dalton and go to the Big Dalton violent intersection and try to get on there, but there's always traffic in the morning trying to get over there. So, I know that our staff has had several meetings with, with Caltrans to try to resolve the problem, but I think it's just, it's not enough and I'm not satisfied with, with Caltrans. I've been in some of the meetings with our city staff and the Caltrans staff and I just think more needs to be done. And it's not something that just because of this project, I just think in general, Caltrans does not, you know, the performance is extremely poor along the 10 freeway where Baldwin Park is. And I think it's time that we start to write letters if Caltrans directors or those in charge of the Caltrans district in our area are not going to pay attention to us, that we need to start taking it to higher levels and make them begin to take care of our areas. So, thank you, Mayor.
Can I add?
Yes, Councilmember Monica Garcia.
No, it's me.
Oh, Cruzbaca, sorry about that.
I agree. I agree with you, Councilmember Mayor Potem Pacheco, wholeheartedly. I travel, like I've said many times, that 10 freeway and, boy, my car's really taking a beating. But anyway, I have a question, Sam, and I know that the ACE and the COG are the ones that, well, now it's the COG and the Transportation Committee off of the COG. Is there any way that we could sort of request, like Councilmember, or Mayor Potem Pacheco said, so that when there is a contract, and I always was under the impression, and especially when you work on the freeways, when some of those companies do those freeways or those upgrades, they have a deadline to meet and it's in their contract. And I'd like to know if there isn't a clause or something in there that they had to meet these deadlines and also the aesthetics and the cleanup, is there anything in those contracts? Can we find out from either Caltrans or the COG or ACE, which existed during this time that these constructions started? Is there any way that we could look at those contracts and see if they have really fulfilled their deadlines?
Absolutely, yes. We have a copy of the current contract. I can tell you that the observations that you guys are pointing out today, that the councils pointed out today, I'm sorry, are correct. So, initially, the schedule that they submitted to the city when they pulled the permit, they were going to be having those ramps done within 10 months. They have far exceeded-
Yeah.
-10 months. They're going on two years.
Wait, let's make sure we get to our state representative, the Senator Ed Hernandez, our state member, Blanca Rubio. Let's get them all in the car because this is, I think they're still treated like second class, a second-class city, because if you do look West Covina and beyond, I mean, look at those plush greenery, yet over here, it's incredible. So, I'm glad you brought that up and also Cruz, because we, this is ridiculous. It's gone too far. The lieutenant governor was here, should have taken him in my Honda and drove over there so he could see, but unfortunately, that didn't, we didn't have time for something like that, but let's do something.
Mayor, I was just going to add because I think we remember, maybe four or five years ago, we all had to write either letters or something because they also left the graffiti. So, it's, you're right, it's an ongoing problem. We couldn't get them to remove the graffiti.
Right.
And if we removed it, then they would sue us and it was just a battle, but they don't take care of that. That's something that we need to really aggressively pursue because they're not taking care of not just that end, but the entire freeway corridor. So, yes, thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I think, and I'm glad my councilmembers agree with me, but it's also the cost to the city, to our businesses and all of us trying to get through the freeway, it's just taking a toll on us and it's two years. You said two years that they were delayed and not been there? I think that needs to be addressed. And I think somebody needs to be held accountable at the Caltrans level because how could it take two years and he's still, I mean, I've seen other off-ramps, like the ones along Baranca, they closed them and they finished them within a matter of not, of weeks, not months, weeks, and he closed them and then he reopened them. And we're still here, two years later, still closing on that off-ramp. And I think whatever it is staff has to do to get their attention, and we have to go to Sacramento and start to bring it to their attention, you know, I think we want to just be treated the same. And I think if there's charges that we could charge Caltrans because of these delays and what it's doing to our community, I think we should look into that and possibly, if we have to go to litigation for that, I mean, I just think it's unfortunate that they treat us the way they do and we want to just bring it to their attention. If you could bring our, as the mayor said, our state representatives, the assemblywomen and our state senators, and to bring it to their attention and tell them when it's not satisfied and we want to hold somebody accountable for what's happening and get that off-ramp open and our landscape completed along that area. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Monica Garcia.
I agree wholeheartedly with you, Mayor Potem Pacheco. And I think it's also an environmental justice issue because meanwhile, we have a lot of the traffic coming through our community and so it's, you know, contributing to greater impacts of pollution and, you know, we were talking earlier about pedestrian safety and so it really is an environmental justice issue. So, if we can also highlight that because I think, you know, Caltrans, I think that they would take those concerns very serious.
Yes. All right, so at this point, direction's been given and hopefully we'll have some results. All right, so at this point, I'd like to open up the Wednesday, November 14th.
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to get direction due to the election next month-
That's right.
...and the Thanksgiving holiday. I wanted to get direction to, in place of those, hold that special meeting on November 14th.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll, okay, and now, second, any objections? See none, so move. All right, at this point, I'd like to open up the Finance Authority and we have the Treasury Report. I'll go ahead and move for approval.
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. This one, I'd like to close the Finance Authority. That's my motion.
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. All right, at this point, I'd like to open up the Ballpark Housing Authority. We have, I'll make a motion for consent counters one and two items.
Second.
Any objections? All right, at this point, I'd like to move for German, excuse me. We'll go over to the public hearing, public hearing. We did this public hearing already, right? Correct?
No, Mayor, this is a different public hearing.
Amendment to the Ballpark Housing Authority, public hearing. So, at this point, I'll go ahead, thank you. Suzie Reyes will give us a brief.
Good evening, Chair and members of the board. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to satisfy HUD requirements regarding smoke-free public housing. While Ballpark Housing Authority is way ahead of the game, making its 12 public housing units smoke-free since January 2014, HUD requires the Senate to comply with their newly established smoke-free policy regarding, I'm sorry, including amending the five-year public housing plan and updating the admissions and occupancy policy known as the ACOP. To ensure public and tenant input, staff met with the Resident Advisory Board, known as the REB, consisting of Section 8 participants and each of the public housing McNeil Manor residents. At that point, we explained the process and reviewed the documents. The REB was informed of HUD's requirements and reminded of the existing smoke-free policy. The REB then approved the amendment to the fiscal year 2015 to 2019 consolidated five-year plan and the ACOP as presented. We also published a public notice and the draft amendments were available for review for the 45 days as required, ending with tonight's public hearing. No comments were received by the public regarding the plans. However, the REB did ask that I mention this about their concern with smoking at the park during the day and they get a lot of that smoke scent. And, but I kind of explained to them, even if they did call the police, by the time the police got there, it would be done. So, they were hoping for maybe some additional smoke, you know, no-smoking signs. So, we, as the housing authority, did put our smoke, no-smoking signs out on the, or we're ordering them, out on the fence by the public housing so that we can hopefully deter some of them. Okay? I'm here for-
Yes, Councilmember Cruzbaca. Thank you. Thank you, Suzie.
Suzie, and I'm glad that you brought up about the smoking because, especially during the street fairs and the, and the concerts, I remember that they're even smoking those vape or whatever you call those cigarettes. I think that we should distinguish and let the people know that that is considered smoking. Just because it's like a vape or whatever it is doesn't mean that that's not smoking. I saw a lot of people using those cigarettes, those electric cigarettes or whatever they're called, during the concerts as well as the street fair. And I think that's very offensive, especially near the playground where the children are, were playing and so forth. So, I would really, maybe we should think, chief, some better signage that would include that or some kind of wording about that or who's in charge of that? Oh, Public Works, sorry. I thought it was a police issue.
So, we can look at updating the signs if we need to.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I thought it was, I thought it was a police issue about the smoking, so.
Okay, so do we need to make a motion on that?
All right, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone opposing? All right, at this point, I'd like to close the, go ahead and close the public hearing. So, at this point, I'll go ahead and make the-
Motion.
Okay, the adoption and approval of the amendment to the Capital Fund Public Housing Agency five-year plan and approve of Resolution Number HA 2018-015 entitled Resolution of the City of Ballpark Housing Authority, approving and adopting the amendment to the Public Housing 2015-19 five-year plan. Three, the update of the admissions and occupancy policy for 12 units public housing McNeil Manor. All right, so that is my motion.
I'll second, Mayor.
Second, any objections? See none, so move. At this point, I'd like to move for closure of the housing authority. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Second, any, yes?
Mayor, real fast, I just want to say that the one component that I forgot to thank with putting together the Measure H homeless plan is the housing department.
Yes, true.
Very, very important component of putting all this together, whether it's supportive housing or preventive homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to move for German.
Second.
Any objections? See none. Viva Ballpark.
Jean. Jean, thanks a lot. That burrito was excellent tonight. You know, I like the aguacate, mix in the frijoles and all that with the tortilla de harina. Thank you.
Good night.